Order, he's right for the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Honor the flag and pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one, indivisible.
Please be seated. Item number two is the invocation. Pastor Reed is ill, and I've asked Councilwoman Cindy Bighorst to give the invocation.
If you would pray, please. Father, we thank you so much for the leaders and the staff of this city. We ask, Lord, that you continue to lead and direct them and keep Saginaw to be a place that is healthy and fruitful and benefits all of its citizens. And, Lord, just continue to watch over and protect us with the upcoming weather, and we thank you for all your blessings. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Cindy. Well said. Item three is honor participation. That's covered on the video screen. Please silence all your cell phones, devices, et cetera, so we can have a nice, quiet meeting. I'd like to welcome all our folks that are watching online. I hope we have people watching online. Let us know. Give us some feedback to the audio-video quality, please. Item number four is consent agenda. Item A is action regarding minutes of April 16th. B is action regarding capital improvements advisory committee recommendation regarding land use assumption and impact fees. I will accept a motion, consider a motion for consent agenda.
Mayor, I make a motion that we...
Approve.
Approve the consent agenda.
Second. Thank you, Valerie. Patrick's second. All those who favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed or not? Let the record reflect, we do have a quorum, a full house tonight. Item number five is a proclamation. There's a proclamation recipient here. Please come up, ma'am. So this is apraxia awareness. And so we've got opportunity to do a couple things. I'm going to read this proclamation in full, then I'm going to give you a chance to speak if you would like to. So please bear with me as I read the proclamation. So this is from the office of the mayor. It's an official proclamation. It is City of Saginaw. Whereas May 14th marks Apraxia Awareness Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout the City of Saginaw about childhood, apraxia of speech, extremely challenging speech disorder in children. Whereas childhood apraxia of speech causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech defects in children. Whereas the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children, those with apraxia endure an incredible and lengthy struggle. Whereas without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia are placed at high risk for secondary impacts in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. Whereas such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities if not resolved or improved. Whereas most children with apraxia of speech will learn to communicate with their very own voices only if they receive early intervention, appropriate intensive and frequent speech therapy. Whereas it imperative there be greater public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in the City of Saginaw among community members, physicians, education professionals, policymakers, and elected officials. Whereas funders such as insurance providers, schools, and policymakers are encouraged to recognize the critical need to provide adequate speech therapy and other services so that the impact of this disorder is minimized and so that thousands of affected children can grow into productive, contributing adult citizens. Whereas our highest respect goes to these children, as well as their families, for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of subto obstacles. Now, therefore I, Todd Flippo, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, Texas, here to proclaim May 14th, 2019, to be Apraxia Awareness Day in the City of Saginaw, and encourage all citizens to work within the community to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech. Proclamation. And welcome to both of y'all.
You want to say thank you?
Thank you.
This is Alicia, and on behalf of her, we just want to say thank you for helping to further the Apraxia Kids mission to raise awareness for apraxia.
Well, thanks.
And then if anyone wants more information, we have information on that, whether you know somebody that, if you apply to, or just to help us further spread the awareness.
Thank you.
And would you all like to take a picture?
Would you like a photo?
We'll do that. Let's do that.
It's occupied.
Moving on to item number six, Brain Cancer Awareness Month. Are the proclamation folks here for that?
Yes.
All right. I will read a proclamation here, and y'all will be allowed to speak if you so choose. Whereas in 2019, cancer remains one of the most pressing public health concerns in the United States. Whereas in 2019, more than 1.762 million individuals in the United States are expected to be diagnosed with cancer, and more than 600,000 individuals in the United States are expected to die from the disease. Whereas the term cancer refers to more than 200 diseases, including brain tumors, both primary and originating in the brain, and secondary originating in other parts of the body that metastasize to the brain, and is estimated that 78,000 people will be diagnosed with brain tumors this year. Whereas brain tumors affect Americans of all ages, races, socioeconomic status, and genders each year, including Saginaw resident Scott Parrish, who was diagnosed with glioblastoma in November of 2017. Whereas this disease affects not only the diagnosed, but their families and loved ones. Scott, along with his support of family and friends, fights this disease on a daily basis. Whereas the first Scott Walk was held May 20th, 2018, to increase awareness of brain cancer in the City of Saginaw. Now, therefore I, Todd Flippo, Mayor of the City of Saginaw, do hereby proclaim the month of May to be Brain Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Saginaw, and encourage all citizens to participate in this year's Scott Walk on May 19th, 2019, to increase awareness and understanding of brain cancer and support those affected. If you may speak if you would like to. Please. You're welcome to.
I just want to thank y'all for the opportunity to recognize...I can't talk. To recognize the month of May as Brain Cancer Awareness Month and for allowing us to share Scott's story. And I do encourage anybody that wants to walk with us. It's in our neighborhood. I've been posting it on Facebook. I'm sure Valerie can help put the message out there as well, so.
I will.
Thank you.
Mayor. Having experienced cancer in my family, my wife had breast cancer at an early age. I dare say there's not a person in this room that's not touched by cancer in some way. And so often, we hear it so much that we tend to turn a deaf ear to a certain extent sometimes. So I appreciate you guys doing this. I have a daughter whose father-in-law she never met because he died from brain cancer about 15 years ago. It hits a lot of us, and so thank you for doing that, and I'll get with Valerie, and we may try to get involved in the walk, too.
Thank you.
Would you like to take a picture?
Yes, please.
Excuse me, Mayor. Mayor. I'd like to ask a question real quick. Could you give us some details about the walk? Where does it start? What time?
It will be on May 19th at 5:00 PM, and it'll start at our home, which is, I can give you the address. It's 1104 Little John Drive, course Saginaw.
Okay. And how long is the walk? Distance?
It's 1.1 mile. It's a very short walk. It's on complete sidewalk, and rain or shine, we'll be walking.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If you have a lot to sign up, our court at 213 Dominion Court, use the whole court.
Oh, thank you so much.
For people to just come there right in front of the house. It's not going to bother us if you block traffic. We're the only driveway in the court, so.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Not a problem.
Sorry, I find it funny that people don't take pictures with me because I'm not the most photogenic guy, but for some reason, they won't take pictures, so I will oblige anyone who wants to. Item number seven. Right? Item seven. Presentation of 2018 Texas Achievement and Library Excellence Award from the Texas Municipal Library Directors Association. For that, City Manager Gabriel.
Mayor and council, it's always nice to receive recognition, and I would like to draw your attention to our library staff and have Director Ellen Ritchie come forward, talk a little bit about the award the library has received again. Also remind you that Wednesday's our storytime, so Wednesday's at 10:00 AM is a pretty good time. Kids can come out, hear a story. May 22nd, Wednesday at 10:00 AM, is Farm Storytime, and they have a guest reader who, I can't announce who the reader is.
Isn't every city council meeting Farm Storytime?
Sir, no city council meeting could be complete without farm references, but we're very proud of our library and our staff and Ellen's work.
Yeah, thanks. So a little bit about the award. The Texas Municipal Library Directors Association gives this award out every year. There are 10 categories. You have to prove that your library is working in those 10 different categories. Some of them are summer reading club, staff development, jobs, you know, encouraging jobs in the economy and that sort of thing. Lot of different stuff. And just the application process gives an all-around picture of the library and what it's doing for the community. So we're very pleased to have this recognition again, and I just want to thank everyone who's helped build the library into what it is today. The council, obviously, and the city manager for giving us the resources that we need to do what we do. The staff, and I have Erica as a representative of the staff, for their daily work to make it a wonderful place. Our library board and our library boosters who give their time to support the library and help us with fundraising, with guiding the policies, all of that stuff. We're really happy to have this and encouraged to move forward and keep improving. Thanks.
We actually need to say thank you.
Don't sit down yet. I've got something to give you.
Put your time.
I should have mentioned, too, I have Janet from the library boosters as well, and a lot of people who really wanted to be here but couldn't.
Ms. Ellen, congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number eight is presentation of Made in Saginaw video prepared by the Hollenstein Career and Technology Center Media Technology Class and recognition of the students involved. And for that, Alora.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm excited to share with you today a very special project that's been in the works since last fall. It began with an idea to tell a different part of the story of who Saginaw is. I think from the outside, people recognize us based on our trains and our grain elevators, and that's part of who we are. It doesn't tell the story of the people who work behind the scenes to be creative and who are employed by many of our industrial businesses. I was fortunate to get to be introduced to George Garza, who's in charge of media technology programs at the Hollenstein Career and Technology Center, which is obviously one of the community's most integral partners. And he led an advanced AV team who took my very basic idea and turned it into something tangible and really great that I think helps to showcase some of the reasons why we can all be very proud of our community. So I'd like to go ahead and debut the video. Again, this is a short marketing piece. It'll be the first in a series of videos that showcase who Saginaw is as a community, and I'm very proud of the work they've done, and I hope you will be, too.
Saginaw is a great workforce.
We are a family.
Saginaw is worthy.
If we've got a employee that has a personal problem that needs help, they're there for you. It's still very family-oriented.
Being part of a small family company is very, very, very rewarding. Having the people that you work for, you know, you at an individual level, is incredibly satisfying.
Saginaw is booming. Saginaw is the perfect location in DFW. Saginaw is pro-business.
Saginaw is perfect.
The City of Saginaw in 1998 helped us build this building. This is probably what I'd be on my whole life to say.
Good job.
Great work. Our nice certificates for all these folks. I want you all to join me up here. I'll let those folks clear out for just a second. We'll move on to item number nine. Consideration and action regarding adoption of 2018 International Fire Code and NCT COG Recommendation Regional Amendments. For that, Fire Chief Doug Spears.
Thank you, Mayor and council. We are seeking adoption of the 2018 version of the International Fire Code and the Recommended North Central Texas Council of Government Regional Amendments to maintain consistency with the 2018 version of the International Building Code that was adopted earlier this year. We are currently under the 2012 version along with the COG recommended amendments. One of the decisions in the adoption involves the requirement of automatic fire sprinklers, more specifically as to when fire sprinklers are required to be installed in commercial buildings. In the currently adopted version of the code, any new building 12,000 square feet or greater requires automatic sprinklers. The recommendation is to reduce that requirement to 6,000 square feet. In the information that was presented to you, the 6,000 square feet requirement is signified as option A. The 12,000 square foot requirement is signified as option B. Should a motion for adoption be made, the motion would need to specify either option A or option B. Implementing the 6,000 square foot requirement puts us in alignment with the overwhelming majority of the fire departments in the DFW region. Confident all of you realize the importance of fire sprinklers. They're always in the right place at the right time, the safest, fastest, most efficient way to combat a fire. I provided some pertinent information in your council packet regarding the square footage requirement and the basis for the recommendation. With that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Chief, sorry, Mayor. Chief, we have an insurance grading system. Is that right? The insurance companies look at individual municipalities, and they say, you're a three, or a four, or a five. And the higher that rating, the lower our insurance premiums are for that region. Is that correct?
Correct. The lower the number rating, the better off we are, right?
So where are we today?
We are at a two.
Okay, what's the highest?
One.
Okay. So with one being the highest, we're at two. Does the adoption of this and requiring these buildings move us any closer to a one? Or if we do not adopt it, does it look like it might move us from a two to possibly a three?
It would be a step in the right direction to pursue a one, but there are many factors to get us to a one. This would be a part of that. We are not at risk, I say that, there are many factors that go into that insurance rating. To my knowledge, we would not be at risk of reducing that rating, not adopting the 6,000 square foot.
And this question's more for Rick than anybody else. Do we know, do we have any areas of the city where our water system does not have sufficient pressure and flow for fire sprinkler systems without booster pumps?
I'm unaware of any. We, in fact, we can design on our last loop of transmission area, but we haven't any pressure. I'm sorry.
I don't believe we have any areas that are lacking pressure or volume.
Okay.
We do have some fire pumps in the city. There's some of our bigger industrial buildings. Since those were installed, the pressure throughout the city and volume has increased, so whether those fire pumps would be needed today in that same facility, I couldn't speak to, but there are a few in the city currently.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Chief, going from 6,000 to 12,000, how many facilities would we impact today?
Going forward, that would be for new commercial buildings. That would also include anybody that wanted to expand their facility, so anybody wanting to expand beyond 6,000 square feet would be required to install fire sprinkler systems. So any new buildings, that really pertains to how many new buildings we get.
Counsel, other questions? If there are no other questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the 2018 Fire Code as recommended by Chief Spears.
I'll second.
Don't you have to say?
Option A or B.
A or B, Patrick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Option A.
Okay. Everybody clear on what option A is? Everybody clear? Okay. Patrick made the motion. He's second.
My second.
Valerie's second. Okay. Any discussion, any other questions? All those who favor, raise your right hand. Those opposed or not? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on. Item 10, Consideration and Action Regarding Building Improvement Grant Request, Community Link. For that, Alora Wachols.
Mayor, as you know, on December 4th of 2018, council...
Alora, I'm sorry. Charlie's going to excuse himself. He's going to abstain from this, so, sorry.
As you know, the Resolution 2018-23 authorized the building improvement grant policy program for commercial business enhancements across the city. We have received our first request for these grant funds by Community Link. That's a well-known entity in the town nonprofit. Their amount request is $14,602.62 in matching funds to move the existing house that's located on property owned by Community Link next door to their existing facility, and to extend their property fence, as well as to assist with the efforts to fix their door and other things. So I ask that you consider this application as a little bit of a unique circumstance because the intention of the building improvement grant program was to incentivize commercial businesses in the community to improve their facade and interiors. However, Community Link is a tax-exempt entity. However, I ask you consider it based on the merits in which they bring to our community and beyond. I've reviewed their application. It's complete. They've included with it their quotes and estimates. We also do have Trey here with Community Link to answer any questions about the project specific. If you have any. Otherwise, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the policy itself.
Counsel, questions?
I have a question.
Valerie.
The Community Link is an awesome thing, okay, and I do donate to it. But don't they serve seven zip codes?
They do, yes.
Okay. So are the other seven zip codes going to help with some of this, too? Or...I know this is a grant, and I get that, but it is a commercial grant, and I thought we were more or less using it for the overlay district, and the Community Link is behind that area, and so...
Valerie, I'm sorry, we don't have an overlay district as the state.
The one that we were talking about, one we were talking about, the boulevard. And so...
The building improvement grant program is actually not confined to any specific area of the city. It's open to any commercial business citywide, so...
Okay, but that's not a business, like you said, so that's why I'm having trouble with it.
Correct. And I would call to your attention Section 8.3 of the policy states that, I'll read it directly, actually, flexibility, the terms and conditions of the policy are a guideline for the board or council during their deliberation. The city reserves the right to modify the terms or conditions here and at any time for any pending application and may approve a grant on terms and conditions contrary to the guidelines set forth. So again, that's why I ask that this be considered as a unique circumstance.
Ms. Wachols, I seem to recall at a previous meeting that we were looking at a $5,000 limit per business, and I would consider if we looked at this a business, and they were asking for almost three times as much.
Yes, so the way the policy is outlined, there are different categories of enhancements, and each enhancement cannot exceed $5,000. So you'll notice in the applications they've submitted that they have four different enhancement categories, those being facade, interior renovation, landscaping, and demolition, none of which exceed $5,000 for the matching funds. The total grant itself is in excess of $5,000. Again, that's based on the need of this nonprofit serving the community.
And how much money is in this building improvement grant fund?
Set aside currently is $15,000.
So Community Link would be using the entire shave of a few dollars?
Yes, and please also know that in consideration of this grant, any amount that council would like to award, if any at all, can be established. This is the grant... This is the grant request amount, but any amount can be established. What would happen next if council did want to proceed with awarding a certain amount of matching funds, then a 380 incentive agreement would be drafted and would come again before council for approval at a subsequent council meeting on consent. So this is, again, the request, but council is able to award whatever amount it is that you may see fit.
Mr. Mayor. So you done?
Patrick has something.
Go ahead.
I just wanna clarify. I recall the discussion around the policy is, and I remember the enhancement count, but in my mind, that was number of beneficiary. It wasn't necessarily picking one beneficiary and letting that beneficiary have three different enhancements for that one particular parcel of land or property or so on and so forth. That's what I had in my mind when we were taking action on the policy. So just to clarify that, I don't know if the council feels the same way that I did at that point.
Well, that's the way I understood it, too. It was $50,000 per thing.
And I know that that's very limiting, that $5,000 doesn't go a very long way for some folks, but you know, this is a very, it's a fledgling state, and as I recall in our meeting last, I guess our last meeting, we were taking action on potentially capping this at $15,000 every time it comes back up at budget time. Essentially, I'd like to see, I'd like to see the love spread a little bit further than one beneficiary. I mean, no doubt about it, that it makes sense for Community Link to benefit from some of this grant program. I just don't know that all of it in a single budget year makes sense. That's my thought on it.
Yes, and again, the intention behind the building improvement grant is exactly, as you said, with a cap of $5,000. However, again, this is, in consideration, is a unique situation.
Were there other grant applicants?
No. So again, that kind of is one of, and it could be one of those situations that we've had a lot of interest in the program, but no one who's actually submitted an application. And so it could be, like many programs, where it really takes someone to kinda get it going and show the results so that others will actually proceed. I mean, and so I do, I understand fully that this is different than what, you know, the building improvement grant policy states. However, it's simply the only request we've had, and it's obviously, you know, what's before you today.
Can I ask a-
I'm sorry, if I could just add to the idea that using all of this in one shot, we still have another three months of, three or four, five months of budget year left. Would the applicant refuse less than the full amount if we just gave part of it?
I don't, I-
They're here to answer that question.
Yeah, if you'd like to answer the question.
I mean, if we could give them part of it, would that help, and then toward the end of the year, budget year, if we have no one using the rest of it, they come back and ask?
Well, I have a question before he answers that. Was everybody else notified of this building grant?
Yes.
Every business in Saginaw?
It's been on the website, we've talked about it publicly, it's gone on Facebook, it's been out in the newspaper, we got in the Star Telegram, it's been, everything's short of going and knocking on doors, yes.
And why have we not done that? Sent out letters and knocked on doors?
I haven't sent out letters, I don't have that in my budget, but that is something that we've looked at doing. Again, I've had a lot of interest in the program, just no one actually-
Just fill out the paperwork.
I know, just fill it out. Fill out the paperwork. The city pays where this thing-
I've sat down with a number of businesses and gone through the paperwork with them.
My thought is, we need to plant a seed. This would be a good first seed, to get something going and say, we can point to, hey, we did this, to this, and I think that would help. As Alora said, they've had some interest, and maybe people would start biting more. And we also have the opportunity to add more money in the next budget cycle as well, if this is something that will keep going and it shows more interest. And I think we need to start.
My thought in asking if the applicant could take part of it, if we did the 5,000, can they use the 5,000? Is there a deadline? They're not gonna have the opportunity for matching funds somewhere else down the road, six months down the road, if the money is still there and we have it, maybe as a council, we can give them the rest of it, but if we just do five, then that leaves 10 to go towards other businesses for the rest of the half of the year. Does that make sense?
Again, council can approve any amount that you see fit. One of the rules in the policy is that the award is given prior to the beginning of any demolition or construction or anything, so it would kinda depend on, if they're gonna go ahead and move the house, for instance, then they've kind of lost that opportunity at a later date to come forward then and request grant funds, potentially. But again, any amount is, I mean, that's up to the council's discretion.
My concern with giving them practically the full amount is that I don't want to set a bad precedence for other companies that are nonprofits to come forward and say, well, you did it for Community Link, and please do not take that as any sort of negative toward you. I mean, I cannot tell you how much I appreciate what you do for this community and the surrounding areas. I mean, what you guys do is phenomenal. I just don't wanna set a bad precedence.
Well, and we do help them in other ways, too.
We do, we do.
So it's not like if we didn't give them all now, we're not helping them already, so don't want anyone to think that we're pushing them away and don't help them at all.
Trey, you will come speak with what the plans would be for this money and maybe what, ask for some of the questions that folks have asked. And introduce yourself, please.
Trey Harper. I'm the Director of Development at Community Link. I knew about this grant before I actually moved here. My wife and I saw it on the City of Saginaw Facebook, and we wondered if Community Link would be a good choice for that. Talking with my executive director, she was under the impression we weren't eligible because we are tax exempt. Speaking with Alora and other city leaders, we learned that we should apply anyways because there are, there is room for fluidity in that understanding. And being a significant nonprofit, taking up a significant footprint of the city and having great need, we thought we would apply. And I wanted to apply with real numbers, not just ask for all the money. So it is a little short of the $15,000, based on some projects we have coming up in the near future that are important to us, to the safety of our building, to the code of our building, and to the beauty of that street there as we demolish a home there and repurpose that space. And so I worked with my team in getting quotes for the work and applied for the grant several weeks ago, and here am I, so to speak, so.
Back to the question that I think David asked. What if, we say we appropriated 5,000, what would you do with that? Or what would you, how would you-
At the 5,000, we would use toward the demolition of that home. That would be our first goal. With that amount of money, sure. As you can see, the other renovations are a little more expensive, so we would have to put those on the back burner.
Where would the door fit in?
That was my next question. I thought the door was a priority when you were here before.
The door was your priority?
For sure, it is, but it's a $15,000 door. And so if $10,000 would be a great, of course, I would love the full amount to help us move on those two capital areas of improvement. So that would be the, do y'all have the grant application?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That would be the facade piece, that would be the door cost.
But is this a matching grant of some type?
Yes.
Didn't you hear that? So if we did half of that amount, could you get the door done?
So my understanding is that I can only ask up to $5,000 of that $15,000. Does that make sense?
Okay.
Yeah.
In each section.
So I have a question. Did y'all ask the other zip codes to help too, or is that not an option?
For sure, it's an option. Not all cities are in the place to have these grants, obviously. I am working at building relationships with the other city leaders and that sort of thing. Being sort of new here, I'm sort of starting from where we're at, trying to love where I'm living here, and since we are Saginaw location, I thought I would start here, and since y'all have a grant in place.
Well, I just think that the other zip codes-
Oh, sure, absolutely. I hope they come aboard.
Who wrote the building improvement grant policy?
We worked with ED Best Practices, a consulting firm, who drafted it, and then it was presented in workshop and finally crafted and approved by resolution by council.
Just a question about where the house is currently.
Sure.
Is it on the church property? The house where it is today?
No, the house is exactly, so if you're facing Saginaw Boulevard, it's to the right of Community Link.
Okay.
South, south side of it.
It's between the Sully Sewing and the-
That's right.
Got it.
It used to be rented out.
Got it. So is that Community Link property?
It is. And the house is beyond repair, there was some, what's the word I'm looking for?
Vandalization.
Yeah, vandalization that took place.
And the intent is to rebuild in the same place?
Yeah, to repurpose the space so that maybe some parking and some building. In kind of long-term goals.
Well, my thinking at this point is, I know that on Thursdays, you guys have a pretty busy street there. Would this, would this improve the flow of queuing and things of that nature?
Yeah, so in the bigger project, you'll see there's an ask of $20,000. That would be for a loading dock, which would improve the flow of things for our space, the warehouse and the way it's used, and would help get our clients moving in a little quicker manner. And so we would also use that space for some parking lot, is the goal, too, so that would help us, obviously.
I think parking on the road and on the street and the congestion there-
It's a challenge.
Is, on the particular days in which you're distributing.
Sure, right.
Do you think it would improve traffic conditions in that area with this?
I think so, yes.
Okay. I mean, I see that as being an upside, if the space is being converted to accommodate some traffic and kind of reduce the amount of congestion that happens on your distribution days. But I have to fall back on when we originally talked about this opportunity being made available to multiple beneficiaries, that's really what I had in my mind, and I really hate to see this opportunity, you know, hit out of the park on one applicant.
Sure, and it's unfortunate that you haven't had more.
And you're the only applicant. That's insane to me, that we're saying, please submit paperwork for $5,000.
And it's only, has it been a month since we started this, two months?
The resolution was approved December 4th. We really kicked off in January with kind of steady marketing-
Four months.
Program.
Yeah.
I have a question. If you make it into a parking lot, I guess this would be very little, it has to be submitted, right?
Yes, it does. We know.
The right, what?
Right, we know.
And that expense is not covered in here?
Correct.
So taking the building down is not going to improve the parking situation?
Not immediately.
Yeah, that would be the first step.
That's step one.
That would be the first step.
I still think the door, and this is my personal opinion, I still think the door is your biggest issue.
Mayor, please.
Can you hear me? Okay. I guess my microphone was on. I really feel like it would be appropriate for us to authorize the entire amount asked for. I know that there are other cities that they help, and I'm quite sure in the future they will be knocking on those doors, and they probably won't be knocking on our door very near future because if we do, in fact, authorize this amount, and with the small, the fact that nobody has made an application, and, you know, if they do, I don't think it would be that difficult for them to wait until the, till the next, till the next fiscal year where we would put more money into the fund. So I just feel like it's not really asking that much, and the money probably will go unused.
Mr. Mayor. Just to be clear, so had talks with Karen, and as Trey mentioned, they were aware that they were not eligible for the program as the council approved, and I might also, the policy that was approved by the council is $5,000 per category, and it's on a cost-sharing basis. If it's your pleasure, we can revisit that. We had not in six months, right, received any applications, which was a surprise to me.
I haven't seen anything else.
The Star Telegram ran a brief article about the program, we had on Facebook, I mean, you can lead a horse to water, but we haven't had any more applications. So I think there's definitely some merit in having a first applicant be successful, if for no other reason than to market the program. So I want to be clear, that was my recommendation to bring this to you. Community Link in no way stepped out of turn. They understood that they didn't meet the intent of the policy approved by the council, but we haven't had any applicants. So if y'all know of anybody, send them our way, send them to Alora.
You're right, we need a success story, you're absolutely right. And just to go back to marketing, I mean, a lady from the Star Telegram interviewed me about this, and she was very excited about this, and they wrote a small article about it. So it has got some press, but not enough, and we need to get some momentum, get it going, some kind of success. We can blast it on our, show pictures on all kinds of medias as well. So I would like to do something on this, but what is the council's pleasure?
I have one last question.
Go ahead, Val.
Can we not send letters to all the businesses first before we do that?
Absolutely. We can, yeah, we can send letters.
Just try it and see. I'm just, I don't have anything against Community Link, but I just feel like that if we blow the whole wad on one thing and then somebody else comes up and we tell them they have to wait, and they're a business here that, you know, I-
Unfortunately, I saw it, I mean, I thought it was well advertised because I saw it from my home in Georgia.
Well, I own a daycare and I didn't get nothing. You know what I'm saying? So, yeah. I'm just saying.
Mr. Mayor, just one point to Councilmember Tankersley. I think some of the issue is while, you know, we all can drive the Boulevard and our commercial areas and see the businesses, that doesn't necessarily mean that those businesses are locally owned or they're local owners. You know, they may be property management groups out of Dallas or, you know, Fort Worth, the vast majority of, you know, strip centers and along the Boulevard, so, you know, I can't tell you why we haven't received more response, but we will definitely send out letters and ask.
And we'll definitely help upon receipt of a gift market, of course.
Absolutely. Any other questions for Trey? Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right, counsel, let's take a step here. What we'd like to do, I would really like to give them something. I think it'd be a good first step, get this program, kick this program off. Do I have any kind of motion, any interest in making a motion of that sort?
So it has to be 5,000, it can't be 7,500?
It can be any amount that you wish.
It's 5,000 per category.
Right.
But you can award any amount that you want, they just can't request more than 5,000 per line, which they haven't.
At least if we did 7,500, they would be able to do the doors. I mean, is that a compromise?
Is that what they're gonna do with the doors first?
I think we give them the money, let them do the, make the choice of what their priority. Yeah. It's gonna be their choice. We give them the money, they can make the choice what category.
But they sort of have to follow a little bit of what we give them the money for, I mean, correct?
So they've made an application based on certain enhancements. If you would like to award an amount, then that amount would go to offset receipt of certain enhancements. So they would be able to turn in receipt for any of the enhancements that they've requested and receive the money reimbursed. So it wouldn't just be for the door because they've requested a number of enhancements, it would be what comes first, up to a certain amount that they request reimbursed for.
I realize the house itself, to move it, you said it's about 5,800. If you're only given 7,500, you move the house, you only have 2,500 to do what with? So, I mean, you're back in the same boat. If we give you enough to match to be able to do the door, at least you get something that I heard was a priority when y'all were here before. Does that make sense?
I just, just for clarification, there may be some confusion, and perhaps it's on my part, just reading through the policy, there is a $5,000 per category limit, there is also a cumulative $5,000 total per 12-month rolling period grant that's permitted. However, there's also a complete flexibility clause that allows you to modify any of those standards. So I just, during your deliberation, if you're gonna strictly adhere to the category limitation, you're not required to adhere to that when, if you're not gonna adhere to the cumulative distribution amount.
So to clarify, the cumulative distribution is by beneficiary in a 12-month period?
Correct, correct. And that is-
That's what I recall.
And that is what is adopted, and there's some examples that explain how if you receive 4,000 for landscaping, you have 1,000 left during the 12-month period for any other you have 1,000 left during the 12-month period for any other category enhancement. So these are, they're cumulative rules that build on one another, but it does say notwithstanding the category limitation, there's a total $5,000 limitation. But as Alora pointed out, at the end of the policy, it says these are guidelines.
Well, at, at the end of the day, we have a request for just under 15,000. We are, and I, I don't want to say that we're bound by a policy because this body can override the policy, but we have all taken action on a policy that limits in a 12-month period, $5,000 going to a single beneficiary. So I, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we grant the maximum that we possibly can in a 12-month period of $5,000 to Community Link to use at their discretion in any one of the three areas that they, three areas that they've proposed.
Second? Sorry, if I may, just, just also to clarify, the policy does state that any entity that is eligible to receive funds must be a tax-paying entity. So, just so that you know, when you said we subscribe to that, to the policy, that the nature of them being a tax-exempt entity is already calling into question that flexibility clause. Does that make sense?
Yes, I'll retract the motion. I'll retract the motion, make another motion.
Please.
Okay.
Good question.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Alora, Orkan, or Gabe, or whoever, in the community policy, let's say we did a work for them, yet it took them longer than the next fiscal year, which I don't know if it would. It wouldn't?
It would not. I think the application asks the timeline.
It does. Just start construction within 60 days and finish within 90 after.
I was going to say, yeah. If it took them longer than the next fiscal year to spend that money, they get reimbursed. We don't do it until they complete the work, is that correct?
Correct, yes.
I was thinking maybe that would be the case, but you say it wouldn't complete before the next fiscal year.
And if the funds were exhausted and we received an application, we would still bring that forward to council for consideration. We could either adjust the funds and increase that, or we could go ahead and earmark it for the next year. But it would still come forward. Council would still hear every application that comes forward for the program. So the 15,000 was really sort of just a rote number that we pulled out to set aside to see how the program would go in its first year.
Anyway, all right, ready for a motion, Mr. Farr?
I am. So, I make a motion, this is one of two motions. I make a motion that we, as a council, overlook the must-be taxing entity requirement of the policy. That's the motion.
All in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed? Mr. Farr?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we authorize $7,500 for Community Link to use at their discretion for any one or multiple of the three items presented.
Thank you, sir. Do you have a second?
One second.
David's second. All in favor, raise your hand. Those opposed? All right, we got a motion. Thank you, Alora. Let's get them, let's get, oh, get Charlie. Yeah, thank you.
What are we doing, interviewing?
Getting Charlie.
Charlie.
You don't want to leave him out there.
You want me to start without Charlie? Come on, Valerie. Slow down. Welcome back, sir. All right. Item number 11, consideration action regarding the dedication of an additional right-of-way to widen Worthy Street at the intersection of North Saginaw Boulevard and discussion regarding proposed diesel fueling stations at this location. For that, Director Public Works, Rick Trias.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, members of City Council. As in the tax, this is a reconsideration of an item that the council denied on April 16th. Bear with me, I want to go through a little bit of history and some factual information on the site. And then following that, barring any questions, introduce some members from Race Track staff to make comments. I believe they have a presentation also they'd like to give the council. Just looking back at some of the history of the site, the site was planted September 13th, 2018. It was subdivided into two lots, one lot being the, the lot that the current Race Track occupies, the second lot being the, the topic of this discussion tonight. Race Track then approached us in the fall with the idea of the fueling station for the use of the, of the Northern Track. Staff identified three main issues that we had with, with the project. One was ingress egress. Clearly is a, an issue that's difficult on the site. Second one was circulation through the site. And then the last one was impacts to Worthy Street, which they were intending or are intending to take access from. Looking at those one at a time, ingress, egress, and circulation, looking at 287, 287 access is controlled by Tex Dot. I mentioned to you at the last council meeting and, and, and some of the questioning that went on that we have attempted to modify the proposed driveway or existing driveway to look, to allow easier egress from the site. We were denied by Tex Dot on three different occasions. However, the turning movement is adequate for a WB62, a designed vehicle. Just for your information, WB62 is a designation by Ash Hill, a 62-foot wheelbase. So, the turning movement requires a 35-foot radius, and it is adequate to address that sort of vehicle leaving the site. The proposed plan that we've come up with on Worthy Street is a collaboration between both staff and Race Track engineers and their management. I will just point out that our subdivision ordinance does have a commercial driveway standard that is 35 feet in width. I can tell you the 35-foot wide driveway on Worthy Street is adequate to allow access if Worthy Street is widened to a 40-foot wide roadway as proposed. However, since one of the consideration was circulation through the site, we looked at circulation curves or curves for truck movements through the site. And so we came up with what is proposed today, which is essentially a 70 or 74-foot wide driveway. I can say that we could put in two 35-foot commercial driveways and we would have similar access into the site if, if the council were to direct us to go that direction, but we, we stand by what the proposal is today. And so the driveway width and radii is designed to, to allow trucks to enter the site with the least amount of conflict and congestion. Part of the plan for the site is to allow egress or ingress only off of Worthy Street, so there would be no trucks, no trafficking exiting the side onto Worthy Street, which is an additional safety consideration or measure. I will say in terms of a wide driveway, there is precedent on the Boulevard. We mentioned at the last meeting, or the meeting with this was denied, that there is a precedent at Southern with the Valero that has a diesel fueling station that would have similar vehicles. That driveway is 60 feet plus or minus in width on Southern. I will say also, and, and we should recognize that the site is not designed to accommodate all commercial or heavy vehicles. Just to give you an example, there's an Ash Hill-designed vehicle that's a WB109B. It's a combo tractor-trailer where you have two tractor, or two trailers with a tractor pull that's 109-foot wheelbase, would never get in and out of this site. So, I mean, there are limitations to what access or vehicles can actually, that the site can accommodate in the way of vehicles. Talk a little bit about Worthy Street. Impacts, that was a concern for staff. Worthy is an existing 30-foot asphalt roadway. I will say that one of the flaws in our subdivision ordinance is it doesn't give the Public Works Department or the city engineer flexibility to widen a roadway as it approaches an arterial. As we look and reviewing our subdivision, we'll make that change, but we requested that Worthy Street be widened to a 40-foot roadway for two reasons, to accommodate turning movements going southbound on 287 into the site. The additional 10 feet will accommodate that turning movement. And, and also one of the other requirements that, that Race Track agreed to was to reconstruct Worthy Street to a concrete pavement section, 9-inch-thick pavement. Our arterial standard in Saginaw is an 8-inch concrete pavement, so it would exceed our arterial standard. That was to, to address structural concerns that might arise from the use of the roadway by these vehicles. Finally, I want to talk just a little bit, there's been talk of perhaps some violation of the truck route ordinance. We've had some discussions along staff. I will tell you, since I authored the ordinance along, of course, with Bren, that the intent of the ordinance is to prohibit truck traffic through residential areas on Worthy Street through the frontage of both Race Track and the property on the north side of Worthy is all community commercial, and both is zoned and used, although Race Track is not used currently we, until they complete the project if, if approved. I will say that if, if you, if you use the truck route ordinance to regulate access to the site, that, that you will impact businesses up and down the Boulevard who, who use side streets for, for deliveries. We have done a full analysis of how many businesses are along the Boulevard that would have that problem, but, but at least on Worthy, that is the case. And would point out one example in particular, one business that has frontage on Worthy actually services semi-tractors. The, the truck route ordinance prohibits through traffic for vehicles that are 18,000 pounds or greater. Tractors can run as high as 20,000 pounds, so you would be denying that property owner the use of his business. And so there would be a question of whether or not that would be a taking in the process of denying access to that site. So unless you have any questions, to me, I would like to introduce Drew Cunningham with Race Track, and he can introduce his team and, and give you a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Drew Cunningham. I'm with Race Track Petroleum, Atlanta, Georgia. 2200-303-24. So, Rick did a great job presenting the history of the project and where we're at, so I'll keep this brief and I feel like open it for questions that y'all may have. I don't want to rehash everything too much. I just want to say that it was, going through this process, we did contemplate with the city and DOT, the EDO, Expanded Diesel Offer, expansion to our site. And we are the, that was contemplated in the additional permitted driveway we got on Saginaw Boulevard. There were concerns in our meetings with the city about the width of some of the driveways on Saginaw Boulevard. And we tried multiple times, as Rick mentioned, to get those driveways widened through the Department of Transportation, and they were just unsuccessful. As Rick mentioned, going through the process, widening Worthy by 10 feet makes our site more comfortable. Having the, the wider driveway to enter the site on Worthy Street makes our site more comfortable. And that's what we're trying to do. We're, we're a business operator that wants to get our guests in efficiently and effectively, while also, safety is a high concern. At the end of the day, the site could be built without the larger driveway and without the right-of-way on Worthy. Again, this is just something that makes the site more comfortable for, for our guests and for the community. And it's our goal to, to see that through. And so, well, that's why we're, we're willing to take on the significant additional cost of redoing Worthy Street all the way to the rear of our property that will serve, as he mentioned, not only us, but some of the other local businesses as well that use the, the heavier truck traffic just across Worthy Street. With all that being said, I'm sure there's some questions. I'd like to be able to answer any of those questions for y'all tonight.
Council, questions?
I have one, sir.
So, Cindy, you want to go? All right, let's, let's send her over.
Hi, thank you so much for coming here this evening. We appreciate you taking the time-
Yes, ma'am.
-and clarifying this for us. It was a little confusing last week. I'm looking at the schematic that you have here showing the flow of traffic.
Was that the attachment on the planning agenda?
It shows entrance into the-
And the exit.
And, from the north and then exiting on the south.
Yes, ma'am.
How do you plan to communicate that information to your drivers?
So we'll have onsite signage and striping. That, and so the, the Worthy Street will be an entrance only, and then they'll be exiting through that first drive on Saginaw Boulevard as you, as you kind of come back into the sedan SUV portion of the site, if you will. And that's also the reason that we went back once we started contemplating this idea of having this expanded diesel offer, of getting that other driveway, because we think it's important to, as much as possible, keep those larger vehicles separated from our everyday consumers as well. And so they can, by nature, they'll, I, I feel like our everyday customers will use the driveway closer to the intersection, and the larger vehicles will use that exit just as it's natural. It, it doesn't make sense for them to circle around the canopy. But we will have significant signage and striping on the site to ensure that we're directing people to the appropriate driveways.
And that goes for the wiggle-waggles as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I think, yes.
The double trailer?
Oh, yeah. I, we're not, yes, we'll have signage for that. As, as Rick mentioned, those guys aren't, they're not coming on our, on our property. We're very confident that the maneuver for that is just not possible.
Tandems, is that what we're referring to?
Yeah, you're talking about the double trailers.
Yeah, wiggle-waggle.
I like it.
Did that answer your question, Cindy?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Patrick, Mr. Farr, Mr. Gore?
Okay. I do have several questions, but I do want to start off with a statement. Our council about 16 months ago denied a specific use permit for the operator that's just north of your property. That operator had asked to be able to sell 18-wheeler cabs from his property. And the reason that he was denied is because we did not want to see 18-wheeler cabs on that corner, specifically stated by this council. I've met extensively with a number of folks in the community, and not one of them wants this fueling station within 300 feet of our second most busy intersection in the city. When was the first time that you learned that the fire chief and the police chief had serious concerns with this traffic articulation?
Are you referencing, I know back in, I guess it was in the third quarter, start of fourth quarter last year, that we initially started the ideas of adding the Expanded Diesel Offer there. And I know we had numerous meetings with police, fire, and staff, and tried our best to accommodate everyone, but we're just not allowed in the, the three different times that we applied to the Department of Transportation to get a wider driveway. That was a concern that was raised with us, was the outbound movement onto Saginaw Boulevard. And we, we tried our best to accommodate that through a wider driveway, and T-Dot, or Tex Dot eliminated us to the currents, what's out, what's built and out there today.
So did Tex Dot articulate to you the reason why they didn't want the wider driveway?
It, it's a standard. And that, that's kind of where they drew the line at. It's just a standard. Now, our EDO, Expanded Diesel Offer, fuel plants and truck turn radiuses and all that were included as part of our submittals to the Department of Transportation. They did not see that it was worthy. They felt Tex Dot has a stance that they believe a wider driveway gives more freedoms and creates more issues. So they, they feel like the truck turn movement works and thought that it satisfied their permit requirements.
So, when did you say that you first heard from our fire chief and police chief that they had concerns with this configuration, the Worthy Street configuration, and entering on from Worthy Street?
I'd have to go back and check. I don't know if you're looking for exact, I would assume if they had concerns, it was around the same time. But again, we've, we've ran the truck turn analysis, and the site functions very well with the right-of-way dedication and with the wider driveway.
Councilmember, I may be able to respond to that. Had we, again, that review started in the fall of last year, and-
DRC?
Not DRC, just-
What kind of review was it?
Plan review process.
The plan review process?
Yes.
And both the fire chief and the police chief?
There was no DRC. They, they were, again, zoned appropriately and planted appropriately for the use, so.
But we're granting a 55-foot wide driveway. That's different than what the subdivision ordinance allows.
That is correct. We could go with 235s if you'd like. But again, the subdivision ordinance doesn't, doesn't provide guidance on every single design consideration or situation. So, this is more of an industrial driveway.
So, bear with me, Rick.
Sure.
Was the police chief and fire chief involved in that meeting?
I don't believe the police chief or fire chief were attendants to the meeting, but police and fire both were in attendance at the initial review meeting, and those comments reported.
Are you aware of the five things that the police chief has communicated concerns about with respect to the location of this development?
I haven't seen a list, no, sir.
Forced yielding, road rage, traffic delays, lane encroachment being a big one, and then increased potential for traffic accidents. All communicated to us as a counsel by the police chief. Were these communicated in that meeting?
The only topics that were discussed at the meeting, and I'm trying to recollect from my memory, is congestion on the side, blockage of the fire lane. There were concerns shared by all about lane blockage. The other items frankly are driver behavior and have nothing to do with geometry and how the site is accessed and exited.
We are creating an opportunity for these drivers to behave that way. Is that not correct?
You create that opportunity for any kind of development that might occur on the Boulevard.
So in the event that we allow access from Worthy and we bend on our rules with respect to how big this drive approach is, and let me ask a legal question here, Bren. Are we required to grant access off of Worthy?
I, no, no, I don't think so. Although, again, that's an opinion based on what our ordinance says. I haven't, and I think we should have a private consultation if we want to discuss what the possible impact is to the entitled land use.
So what I would ask, Mr. Mayor, is can we take a brief moment and have consultation with our attorney in executive session over this issue?
Would that be appropriate, Bren?
Certainly.
All right. All right, then, at 7:12, we'll excuse ourselves into executive session.
All right, at seven thirty-eight, we're back in for an executive session. Sorry about the delay.
No worries.
Thank you for staying with us. All right, so, continue discussion.
Did you stand up the whole time, or did you get to sit down?
I did, it was just stretches.
All right. All right, so, more questions for the Race Track folks.
I have five questions left, so...
Your Honor, can I ask a question? Can I call the question, please?
Yeah.
Okay, because we discussed it all. Maybe Brett needs to talk about what call the question is, but I think that's where we should be.
So, for those of you who don't know, Robert's Rules of Order provides for a procedural mechanism where you can make a motion to end debate. It requires a second and a two-thirds majority vote, which would be five out of seven members of council.
Our values, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any second? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? We're just voting on the call of question. So, all those in favor, raise your right hand. One, two, three, four. All those opposed? All right, that's five, right? Motion passes, okay. Now, we move on to the question. You guys sit down, because we're done with y'all, thank you.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, could I offer one comment? I don't...
We're done, I'm sorry. It's all done. Okay, so, then I will entertain a motion on item number eleven.
Your Honor, I make a motion that we accept the dedication of the right-of-way from Race Track.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Cindy, second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, folks. All right, item number twelve, at seven forty, session to workshop. Item number thirteen, public art policy discussion. For that, Alora Wachols.
Mayor and council, this item is just for discussion purposes and to get an idea from council if y'all would like to proceed with drafting a public art policy for the community. Presentation, okay. So, first, the question would be, why would we look at drafting a public art policy? Obviously, art helps to define a community, it creates a sense of place, and having public art helps to inspire more art and the artistic community. Why have a policy? Because art is subjective, and a lot of communities find themselves, whether it's private development that wants to bring forward art pieces as part of a larger development, or whether it's an organization within the city that wants to partner and acquire public art, that because art is subjective, sometimes it can be a little bit unruly, is this something that the community supports, is this considered art? I've found hundreds of definitions of art, so, that's one of the reasons why preparation has value, you'll see on there, having a policy in place kind of in advance of the acquisition of public art helps to set some policy, procedure, rules, that kind of thing, that everyone can agree on whenever we start to hear and see requests come in. So, if this is something that you'd like to proceed with, then, there we go. Oh, there we go. So, the first steps are that the idea of creating a public art policy was brought to the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee late last year, early this year, January of this year. And since they are kind of the natural entity, that would probably start some of this acquisition of public art, or review public art, and then recommend to council for approval any art pieces. So, input was sought by the Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee, is this something that they're interested in? And Keith will talk about that, but they did express interest in proceeding with a policy. Now, it's before you tonight to see if you'd like to continue in this direction, to draft a policy and put into place some requirements that then we could all move forward with. And we've also started looking at other cities that have been proactive and have put into place programs such as this, and taken some of the best practices to consider. We'd look at sort of, again, who should the players be, what Keep Saginaw Beautiful's role is in recommending to council, council, you know, final authority. We want to take into consideration, again, public acquisition of art, as well as if there is a resident that wants to dedicate or donate art, or if we have, for instance, an HOA that would like to raise funds and add some public art, or, you know, a Rotary, or a senior citizen group, or something like that, just kind of what would the process be? So, if it is something that you're interested in moving forward with, and the next steps would be that we would take those best practices, Keith and I would kind of draft up a policy and take that to Keep Saginaw Beautiful Committee, so that they could then kind of go back and forth, tweak it, get it into something that they would like to recommend to you for approval, and we could proceed from there. Of course, asking for feedback throughout. But again, this is an open discussion for however you'd like to see it, if you would like to see an art policy in place, that kind of thing. So, I'd like to turn it over to Keith to talk about how Keep Saginaw Beautiful felt about this policy.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was going to get up and do the presentation like my leader Gabe does from the podium, but I think after getting up and down, taking four sets of photos, I pulled a hamstring, I'm not sure, but it's... I'm going to stay seated for this. Like Alora said, we presented this to our Keep Saginaw Beautiful... If I say Beautification Committee, forgive me, it was named that for about twenty-plus years, so it's kind of ingrained in my head, so, bouncing, it's the same thing, basically, same group. We presented that to them back in January, and they were very excited. One of the things we talked about is, you know, it's, and I'm not always, I don't think we should do something just because X city does it, but a lot of times, X city has a lot of really good ideas, or a number of different cities have some good ideas. And I'm going to scroll through here and show you a few things, but before I, no, I'll do that at the last. I'll show you some ideas of what some other cities have done. This first one is in North Hurson Hills, it's actually in a homeowners' association, in a neighborhood association. And the projects that they have, they have them in different parks, they're paid for by the homeowners' association, they have them in parks, they have them in medians, they have them in, I guess it's, if you want to call it a median, it's kind of a three-way exit onto another street. They have them in various different locations. This one right here that I'll show you is actually in a median. What they, they call it Magnolia Park or median, but it's, they have on the corner of that median, they have two pretty large magnolia trees, and some other trees in the middle. And what they created, they got with a curator and an artist to come up with some pretty large steel structures, and those are the, that simulate the bloom of a magnolia tree to just enhance that beauty. They have three different ones, they all look different, just like if you ever get, you've seen those blown glass art pieces, not one of them looks the same, and the same is like this, they're not cookie cutter, they're all custom-made. These were custom-made magnolia blooms. Finger's not working, there we go. This is another median, but they also call it a park, it's, you can kind of see, if you look carefully, the ribbon, the purple ribbon, lavender-purple ribbon, it's pretty thick steel, and there's butterflies, adding to the beauty of that area, adding some color. This is a reverse view, it's kind of hard to see because I took the pictures about ten o'clock in the morning, or around or ten o'clock in the morning, but you can kind of see the idea of the art in the park. The homeowners' association, each year, they, with the dues that they collected, they set aside money for art to put in the park or in the medians to beautify that whole neighborhood Here's two more features, the one on the left is kind of an abstract piece, it's probably, I'll have to go back real quick. Those are about the size of a small car, or smart car, maybe, they're probably about four foot tall, four foot in diameter, something like that. This one, you can see the length of that, so that you can see the different size. The blue one on the left is probably about eight foot tall, five, six foot circumference, just kind of an abstract piece. You can see the street coming up, and it splits, so it's in a small area. The one on the right, at the time, was not dedicated, and they weren't completely finished, but it was installed, is a bronze structure. Bronze structures are a little bit more expensive just because of the material that they're using, but you can kind of see the different pieces that those, both of those, or the one on the right is actually in one of their main park. Some other ideas that were presented to...
What was I saying?
I almost said beautification. Keep Saginaw Beautiful is in San Angelo, Texas, you know, at Angelo State is the main college go-rooms, I'm a graduate of Angelo State. In major intersections around town, they have a U, or a sheep. And each one of those sheep structures, they're painted different, not one of them is the same. The structure itself, they're identical, but the painting, the art throughout town, every one of them is different. They, it's, I'll get it wrong, help me, Gabe, it's not the mohair capital of the world, but it's the, help me with sheep.
Yeah, I think that's correct, mohair capital of the world.
Thank you.
It's a wooly booger.
Gabe is the sheep expert. Wichita Falls, same type of thing, where their mascot of the college, their Midwestern University is a Mustang, and throughout town, in different locations, they have a horse, a Mustang, not one of them is painted the same, but they all have different looks. I'll give an example, that's, I don't have a piece of art or picture, but it was in Alora's presentation, was an idea of, you know, a mural on a wall, and she had, one of the pictures was kind of an angel wing... of the pictures was kind of an angel wings back behind you. And I think of, you know, when my daughter's gone to Austin and, you know, it says Austin, Texas, back behind it, and they got, everyone goes and does the whole, hey, say, selfie back there and taking pictures, and it promotes the town. And just recently, myself, I was in Lawrence, Kansas, from one of my daughter's athletic things, and my wife and I were walking down a historic, kind of historic part of town where they have a lot of strips. It's called Massachusetts Street. If you've ever been to Lawrence, Kansas, beautiful, very historic. But there's a walkway between the parking lot and that street, and on that wall of that 100-year-plus-year-old building was some art. And of course, it says Lawrence, Kansas in the background, but it suckered me in because I, my wife and I were, yay, you know, taking pictures. And after we walked up and down the street, we came back through, walking through there, we saw, you know, a whole bunch of people lined up just to take those pictures, and it's great. It's great marketing, it's great promotion of the city. These are just some ideas, they're not things that we're saying you should do or anybody should do, they're just some ideas to look at. The Keeps Saginaw Beautiful Committee was very excited about the idea of getting arts, whether it's in the park, whether it's at intersections, where it's, you know, just around town, you know. We gave you a few ideas of just some ideas and things that can be done.
Thank you, Keith. Thank you, Laura. Counsel?
Yeah, kind of looking for your feedback on how you'd like us to proceed.
Counsel, what's your pleasure? Mary?
Yes, I think it's a great idea. I think it goes along with our desire to beautify the city, and I think it makes everybody feel cheerful and proud of their city and excited. So, I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea, and I think the first structure we need to erect is the statue of Officer Joe Bozinco.
On the motorcycle. On the motorcycle.
Or with his neck brace.
With his neck brace, on the motorcycle.
Well, I think we ought to get that pointy metal thing that you had right there in the, over here. Yeah, I like that.
Mayor, if I could interject something real quick. All of those pieces that you saw, the photos that you saw, and even the ones in Alora's, they're... The funding mechanism for it is open, because each one of those things we showed you, that you have individual artists, you have businesses that paid for some of those pieces. You had a homeowners association, a neighborhood association that paid for some pieces. You know, I didn't have photos of it, but, you know, for example, the North Hurson Hills Library, they have these metal structures located around different art pieces where the city paid for that. And you have even, you know, committees or commissions, whatever, you know, however they call it in their city, paying for it, so they can be funded in a number of different ways.
Valerie, what do you think?
Oh, I'm for it.
Patrick?
I think the community would be very receptive to it. I know that when we did the wraps on our signal boxes, that was a big hit in the community, so I can't see that this would be taken any other way.
Mr. Florrie?
I thought those wraps were art.
They are. Heck, yeah.
It's a great idea. I do, I agree. Southlake has the town center with the little bulls or steers or whatever, and so if we want to be like Southlake, we can get us some artwork.
We're going to have a bust of Gabe at the entrance of Saginaw. How's that?
Give him a cow.
You know, I might add that Alora mentioned that art is subjective, and I would submit to you that that would not be art, nor would I recommend that.
Would it be Holsteins, or would it be...
We should get some of those wind things, those spiral...
I'm amazed that North Hurson Hills has so much. I had no idea, I didn't know Oxford could afford all that. I got to talk...
North Hurson Hills is loaded with...
I can't believe that. I'll have to check that out. But, yeah, I think it's an awesome idea. Move forward. Absolutely.
And is everyone comfortable with the idea of having Keeps Saginaw Beautiful as the recommending body and kind of for council? Is that, are we headed the right direction?
Yes.
Sounds good to me.
Thank y'all very much.
And thank you, Laura. Thank you. Thank you, Keith.
I think you need to talk to Robert Neal, he does a lot of great metalwork.
All right, so at 7:54, we convene back into regular session. Item 15, executive session, I believe, is not required.
We already had it.
Hallelujah. Motion adjourned.
My second.
Valerie's second. All in favor?
Right hand.
All opposed? 7:55. Thank y'all.